Good evening. This is Enid Lapellis. Today is October 13, 2020, and the time is 8:01. This is a regular meeting of the Monroe Town Council. As is customary before the start of our meeting, would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those Town Council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present and are able to hear me. Members, when I call your names, please respond in the affirmative. Dee Dee Martin.
Dee Dee Martin here.
Jason Aguilar. Sorry, Jason Mauer. We know Jennifer Aguilar is not on the record. Jason Mauer.
Jason Mauer, present.
Terry Rooney.
Terry Rooney here.
Jonathan Formicella.
Jonathan Formicella here.
Scott.
Tony Scott here.
Sean O'Rourke.
Sean O'Rourke here.
Kevin Reed.
Kevin Reed.
And myself, Enid Lapellis. Other Town officials and state members present, when I call your names, please respond in the affirmative. First Selectman Ken Kellogg.
Ken Kellogg here.
Town Attorney Frank Leada. Police Chief John Salvatore. Director of Health.
Nancy Brolath here.
Community Services, Social Services Director Hannah Ali.
Hannah Ali here.
Public Works Director Chris Nowaki.
Chris Nowaki here.
hereby declare a quorum and call this meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website, www.monroec t.org for public inspection. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Gerner Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B, dated March 14, 2020, using go-to-meeting electronic conference technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please be sure that you have assessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on first-access basis and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed this participation limit for this meeting, it should appear that we are approaching said number so that any member of the public is denied access to the meeting. The chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date, using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take notice of the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. One, that this meeting is being conducted in real time. Two, that this meeting is open to the public. Three, that any member of the public may listen or view to this meeting anonymously. Four, that this meeting is being recorded, and while we ask that, you mute your microphones and let's recognize you speak, that anyone you say, anything you say or display on your screen may become part of the recording. That this recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days. That the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time, in Town Hall or upon written request. As set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature and permit public participation. Any written comments from the public regarding any business which would otherwise be germane to public participation and received between the date the agenda was posted or now before the start of this meeting will be read into the record during the public participation portion of this meeting. Ground rules to ensure the meeting runs smoothly, the comments are audible, and any accurate record is maintained follows. This meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask all participants to follow these special rules in addition. Please mute your microphones so as to reduce background noise at times you are not speaking. Prior to speaking, on each occasion, you must clarify, clearly state your name for the record. Three, the use of chat procedures is prohibited and will not be considered in the meeting at any time. All members will have an opportunity to speak on agenda items, however, please hold your comments until you are recognized. Once discussion is complete or a vote has been taken by parliamentary procedure, the chair will call for a roll call vote on the motion. Before we continue, I understand that Councilman Kevin Reed wishes to make a motion regarding suspension of the rules of procedure. Mr. Reed?
Yes, I would like to, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I move that pursuant to Article 7 of our Rules of Procedure, the Town Council suspend Rule 13, which requires all matters relating to the general government of the town and all agreements to which the town as a party be referred to LNA as due to the coronavirus or subcommittee, including LNA, have not met, to consider the matters which appear on this evening's agenda, which otherwise could have been or would have been referred to and voted on by LNA as a condition precedent to appearing before the full body.
Thank you. Can I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Jason Mauer, thank you very much. Councilmember Reed, just a quick question. Knowing that our plan presently is to return to in-person meetings for council at our next meeting, is it also the plan to resume LNA at that point? Or are we still planning on holding that off?
Yeah, I think the plan is to sync that up. If council's back, LNA will be back, not until then.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right, let's have a roll call vote. Dee Dee Martin.
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer.
Jason Mauer, aye.
Of course, we realize this is a roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rule. Terry Rooney.
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella.
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott.
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke.
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed.
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapellis, aye. This motion passes eight to zero. Consent calendar, are there any objections to me passing the consent calendar as presented? I hereby pass the consent counter as presented. Communications, I hereby ask that communication items A to L be referenced and amended to the meeting. Public participation, at this time, I want to ask Mr. Kellogg to assist me in determining the next item on the agenda, public participation. So, Mr. Kellogg?
On behalf of you, Madam Chair, at this time, if anyone from the public wishes to speak during the public participation portion, please remember to unmute yourself and indicate your desire to speak. And one more time, anyone wishing to speak during public participation, please remember to unmute yourself and indicate your desire to speak at this time. Madam Chair, I see no one indicating a desire to speak.
So this means that second participation, we don't really have to do, correct? Because nobody, or you're going to tell if somebody comes in?
Yes, Madam Chair, the only meeting where second public participation is not appropriate is during a special meeting. All irregular meetings. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, there are no appointments tonight, so for action items, there are no regular reports from our subcommittees at this time. We will go to Action Item G and ask the First Selectman for his update. And I think most of you know it was on your computers a little while ago, an update from the Selectman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I did email it out earlier, but I will go through it as I always do verbally as well. First of all, the COVID update is that we have a case count as of today at 163, which is a little bit of a bump up. We have been advised that the state reported a backlog of cases from 9/26 through 10/8 that came in on Monday, and I do believe that some of those are from that backlog as well. However, you know, it is of note that there have been some increase in case numbers reported throughout different parts of the state. So seeing some increase is certainly not inconsistent with that. Nothing alarming, but it's certainly something we are going to continue to keep a close eye on. The Governor's Office reported that the state's seven-day rolling test positivity rate is approximately 1.5%. Although today, they did report for the first time a percentage that was over 2%. It was asked during today's press conference with the governor if there would be any consideration of rolling back on the Phase 3. The indication that was given was that, there was nothing firm on this, but the sense that was relayed was that rollbacks would be considered if there was sustained transmission or sustained positivity rates north of 5%. There was also some executive orders that were, that came out late this afternoon that allows individual municipalities to roll back on their, just within their community, based upon certain metrics, which would be a very relatively high case counts, which we are not close to approaching at this point. So, given that the state has continued to move forward with their Phase 3 opening, the following changes took effect today, which I announced on Friday. First Town Hall is open for walk-in services. Obviously, all the rules regarding distancing and masks are in effect. The library has expanded their hours for express browsing, and they are also allowing walk-in access. It is subject to overall reduced capacity limitations, so there are some procedures in that regard. Their details are posted on the library website. And of course, we continue to encourage remote servicing, scheduling appointments online on our website, you know, calling or mailing Town Hall, using the library to go service. Those are all still in effect, but we have relaxed access to both the Town Hall and the library as well. In regards to the Halloween matter that I know is of interest, I did announce on Friday some summary, which I kind of repeated somewhat here. The State Health Department did release their recommendations. I've attached them to this report. They are, they go into a certain level of detail. But one thing I will note is that for parents and residents who choose to participate in trick-or-treating activities on Halloween night, please take specific note of the guidelines that they released regarding trick-or-treating. They are saying that there is, the traditional format of trick-or-treating carries some risk, and that you need to be aware of that. And there's a lot of recommendations on how to do that in a more safe manner. Based upon the state's guidelines that were released on Halloween, our youth commission has decided to not hold their annual Trick or Truck event this year. And the other update I want to give is the library, which holds an annual Halloween parade for our preschool children. It will be done as a drive-through event this year, and it'll be done on Friday, October 30th. Again, employing all the safety precautions, and the library is doing sign-ups on their website. My next update is in the Emergency Management Department. As you're all aware, Dave York has been our Emergency Management Director for, I think, over two decades. During that time, emergency management has evolved considerably and requires a significant amount of time. And the current pandemic has certainly highlighted that, as well as the complexity of that. Dave has a passion for our CERT team and has decided to focus his efforts on leading the CERT team. So in that capacity, Dave is going to be assuming the role of Deputy, of a Deputy EMD and CERT Coordinator. It is a critical support role, but it will be less than of his time. In light of that, Keith White, who has served as our Deputy EMD since his promotion to Police Captain, has continued to take on increasing responsibilities for emergency management. That's been evident throughout the pandemic and the recent tropical storm. Keith will be, or has assumed the responsibility now of Emergency Management Director. And to maintain a broadly focused Deputy EMD support role, I am pleased to share that Bill Dabbin is going to be assuming the role of Deputy EMD. So I hope you'll try and man congratulating both Keith and Bill and thanking Dave York for his many years of service and his continued leadership on the CERT team. Thank you. I want to give an update on just a few new business updates. Warehouse Wines and Spirits, which is currently on Main Street next to Northeast Laser or Biometrics, will be moving from Main Street, and they will be occupying a significant amount of space, 4,600 square feet, in the former CVS location in the Big Y Shopping Center on Main Street. I'm sorry, I'm on a return bike. That is pending a final approval, which is anticipated at the next planning and zoning meeting. They had already indicated to staff to prepare a resolution of approval. In, in light of the vacancy that would then exist on Main Street, I'm pleased to report that Northeast Laser, or they're part of Biometrics now, will be expanding their current location into the 6,800 square feet that was vacated by Warehouse Wines. So it's great, that is obviously a net improvement to our, to filling our, our commercial space. Angelo's Specialties Fine Foods has opened on Elm Street in the former Gaetano's location. They opened up on October 4th, and we're looking to schedule a ribbon-cutting for them as well. But I'm very pleased in that we've, we've gotten a new business there in a very short period of time, and that's through a lot of, a lot of pieces coming together, and not least, but been a lot of strong support from staff. And last but not least, I wanted to say that Crown Pizza, which I know is a store in our neighboring town, is in the process of opening up another store in Monroe, and that will be in the former Tuscany's location on Main Street. They're still in the process of just getting their health permits and things, you know, the routine stuff in order, but that's well underway. My next update has to do with the cell tower update. As I reported earlier, we held a public informational meeting that was conducted on September 30th, and this is regarding the proposal by ARX Wireless to put a tower up on Fane Hill Road behind the Chalk Hill Building. The next step in this process would be consideration by this Town Council for a ground lease. I am not yet, that, that matter is, however, not yet ripe for council consideration. There are a few things that came up. Well, first of all, the lease was still under negotiation, but there were other couple of things that came up during the public meeting that I am waiting for ARX to finalize. One is, they had reported verbally to me in the, you know, prior that they had done analysis of various locations. I am waiting for them to consolidate and provide me some confirming report to that regard of their evaluation of other town land in the area, to just ensure that they've done their due diligence, that this is the appropriate location and, and the least disruptive to neighbors. And also, there were some discrepancies that were brought to light on their balloon simulation report. What came up was the fact that, I guess, a couple of addresses were slightly off in terms of the number, the street number. Their technician had reported that they were going off of geocoding of latitude and longitude, and I guess utilized some database to output the address, which may not have been as precise as one would have expected. So I have required that they correct that report and submit a new report showing the correct house numbers of where those pictures were in front of. And last but not least, as I said, the, the lease is still under review by the Town Attorney, but one thing that any lease that I would bring before the council would incorporate some assurances that ARX made during the meeting, which is in regards to their providing at their cost an independent power density emissions report, which will demonstrate compliance with FCC regulations in regards to the amount of emissions that the tower would, would generate. The last item I wanted to update on was the PURA investigation regarding the ever-source response to the tropical storm. I announced in August that we, in line with our intervenor status, we collect, we are collecting statements online. We will continue to do so. We have over 70 reports at this time, and they will be submitted to PURA according to their docket schedule when we have our opportunity to do that. However, I wanted residents to know, and I've, I've shared out there publicly that PURA on their own is also conducting three public hearings where residents, business owners, property owners can, if they choose, speak directly to PURA. Obviously, even if they've submitted something to the town that doesn't preclude them from speaking at the public hearing themselves, these will all be conducted by PURA over Zoom, and advanced registration is required. The dates are Wednesday, October 21st at 11:00 a.m., Thursday, October 22nd at 9:00 a.m., and Friday, October 23rd at 9:00 a.m. And all the information and the links have been posted on the town's website under News and Announcements. And that, Madam Chair, is my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no unfinished business tonight, so going on to new business, Item A, Resolution 20-98, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding fair and impartial policing license agreement. Mr. O'Rourke, could you please introduce the motion?
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution Number 20-98, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the license agreement and any associated documents by and between Fair and Impartial Training LLC for the, for the fair and impartial training program.
Can I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay. Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I've outlined in my memo to you, Chief Salvatore, who is on the call this evening, has identified an immediate opportunity through Connecticut Post, that's the statewide training council, to basically create a training program for this fair and impartial policing program consistent with the Police Accountability Act. This is a Train the Trainer course. So in that course, we'll be utilizing some proprietary materials from a third party, and they require the license agreement that's before you to be in place in order to release those materials that would be utilized by our officers. And you have a letter of opinion from the Town Attorney, and as I said, Chief Salvatore is on the call. If you have any further questions that I cannot answer myself.
So do any council members have questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, Jason Mauer. I'd just like to thank the chief and the Monroe Police with the new laws in Connecticut for taking such quick action to make sure that the proper training that's now required is done. It's great to see, and you, we've come to expect nothing less from the Monroe Police Department. So just thank you for getting on top of this right from the get-go and making sure that this training takes place as, as quick as possible, which is fantastic to see happening in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any other members have a discussion coming? Nobody?
I'll just, I'll just add, in First Selectman Kellogg, not only would I echo our thanks to the police chief, not only is this being done exponentially, the Train the Trainer program will be, will be completed this week. So it is being, it is happening as we speak.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Or I'm calling for a roll call vote on the resolution. Dee Dee Martin? Dee Dee, a roll call vote on this resolution?
Yep, Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lapellis, aye. So the motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Item B, Resolution 20-99, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding Health Improvement Alliance Memorandum of Understanding. Mr. O'Rourke, could you please introduce the motion?
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution Number 20-99, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Memorandum of Understanding and any associated documents by and between Bridgeport Hospital and St. Vincent's Medical Center for the Health Improvement Alliance.
Thank you. Can I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you have before you, this is a, the Health Improvement Alliance is not a concept, it's something our Monroe Health Department has been working on in the region for some time. It's been a collaboration between area towns and area hospitals. What is new is that we've identified that for, for future sharing of information and collaboration, it is appropriate, the hospitals have asked that this MOU be executed so that we are able to properly share further information that they want to be able to as relates to the, as relates to the alliance. And again, this has been reviewed by the Town Attorney, who's provided his opinion as well. And Nancy Brolath is on the call if you have any questions.
Anyone have a question of Ms. Brolath? So, any discussion from the Town Council members? Okay, so I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And myself, Enid Lapellis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Item C, Resolution 20-100, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding live scan device transfer agreement. Mr. O'Rourke, could you please introduce the motion?
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution Number 20-100, resolve that John Salvatore, Police Chief of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the license agreement and any associated documents by and between Fair and Impartial Training LLC for the fair and impartial training program.
Thank you. Can I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Madam Chair, Chief Salvatore, may I interrupt? The, the motion is incorrect. The motion is incorrect. This is between the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the Town of Monroe regarding the live scan. Apparently, this is a repeat of the fair and impartial on the motion.
I think there's a-
But it should be between.
You know what, it's, let me, this First Selectman Kellogg speak. You know what, Chief, it is actually my error. I believe in the memo, the resolution box has a cut-and-paste error. So you're absolutely correct. Mr. O'Rourke, I would ask that you withdraw your motion and restate it appropriately. The chief is correct, the license agreement will be between the Town of Monroe and the State Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
Okay, so, Mr. O'Rourke, can you remove the resolution?
I withdraw the resolution.
Okay. And now can you write it or announce it the proper way?
It's between the Town of Monroe and, what was the rest of that?
It is from the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
Repeat?
State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
So should Mr. O'Rourke read the entire thing again, for clarity?
Yeah, if he's withdrawn his motion, he can simply make a new motion, properly restating the resolution, correcting my, my cut-and-paste error.
I just want to clarify before he does that the resolution number, I believe, is still correct, though, 20-100.
Yes, that's correct. You can still, you can, it can still be numbered because the original one was withdrawn and not acted upon. So it, it doesn't exist yet. I agree.
Okay, so, Mr. O'Rourke, can you do this, please?
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution Number 20-100, resolve that John Salvatore, Police Chief of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services, Public Protection, and any associated documents by and between the State, the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services, Public Protection. And, hang on a second.
For the live scan device transfer.
For the live scan transfer agreement.
Okay. So can I have a second for this motion?
Terry Rooney, second.
All right, Terry Rooney, Rooney did it. Okay, so Mr. Kellogg, start the discussion, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And again, apologize for that typo causing some, thank you for catching that, Chief Salvatore. So as is indicated there, the state has certain technology that they need to transfer to the town. It's for the automated fingerprint identification system. If you have any questions on that, I will certainly refer that to Chief Salvatore. That is, you would have to explain that further. But essentially, this is something that the state requires the chief of police to execute in order for us to obtain the equipment for our routine matters. And the town attorney has provided his memo as well.
Okay. So anybody have questions to Chief Salvatore?
Madam Chair?
Jason?
Jason Mauer. The agreements actually between State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the Monroe Police Department, not the town of Monroe. As such, I move to amend the resolution to be resolved and approve the live scan device transfer agreement by and between the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the Monroe Police Department.
Okay, so I'll need a second to the motion.
Second, DeeDee Martin.
Okay. And so, Mr. Kellogg, you've given your discussion. Does anybody else wish to ask either Mr. Kellogg or Chief Salvatore any clearance?
I mean, in regards to the-
We first have to discuss and vote on the amendment before we can discuss and vote on the actual agreement.
Okay. So we have a second to it. We've had some discussion. Can I get a motion to vote on this amended?
It's already been moved. We just need to vote.
You need to vote on it.
Okay, so I'm calling for a roll call. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And myself, Ena Lappelis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
You didn't, you didn't give me Ena, sorry. This is Tony Scott.
Okay, I beg your pardon?
Yeah, you missed me. So I'm going to say Tony Scott, aye, and then I'll make it eight to zero.
Okay, sorry. Okay, going on to, so this vote, motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Going on to item D, Resolution 20-
No, Madam Chair, we have to, that was just on the amendment. We still have to, if there's any discussion, and then vote on the agreement itself.
Okay, I got a sheet in front of me. It'd be nice if I read it.
That was just, yeah, that was just to fix the, fix the resolution. Now, we're going to actually talk about the, you know, converse about the resolution.
Okay. So any discussion on the resolution? The amended resolution? Any discussion? So do we have to another roll call vote? Sure, yes.
Yes, you do.
On the amended resolution. Okay, so DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Ena Lappelis, aye. So the motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Going on here, you think after spending whole day listening to Amy Coney Barrett, I'd be halfway through law school already. So item D, Resolution 20-101, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding signup genius terms of service and privacy policy. Mr. O'Rourke, the motion?
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution number 20-101, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe consent to the terms of service and privacy policy and any associated documents by and between signup genius, Inc. And that the first electman is further authorized to delegate such authorization to specific town employees.
Okay, can I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as my memo outlines, Hannah Lee, Community and Social Services Director, who's on the call, has, is working to move our annual holiday gift drive for social services online, for obvious reasons. So she's identified a great solution using signup genius, which I think many of you are probably familiar with. It's pretty widely used for similar types of activities. Our town attorney has provided the attached opinion letter for you. And given that, we may choose to use this for other purposes in the future, I thought it appropriate that I have the authority to allow any other department heads or employees that might want to use it for their programs to be able to sign up for an account as well should they decide to use it for some other purpose.
Okay, thank you. Does any staff have any discussions? Like Mrs. Ali, any discussion about this? Or do you have questions? Is that Mrs. Ali, you first?
Yeah, no, I was just saying that it, you know, that everything will remain confidential and pretty much when you sign up for a tag, so to say, it'll read exactly what you would get if you were physically getting a tag, you know, from the various locations.
Okay, thank you. Any of the council members have any discussion from Mrs. Ali? Questions? Oh, I'm going to call for a roll call vote on this resolution. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And myself, Ena Lappelis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Item E, Resolution 20-102, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Sippin Energy Products' new customer application agreement for propane. Mr. O'Rourke, can you please introduce the motion?
I move that the resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution number 20-102, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the new customer application agreement and any associated documents by and between Sippin Energy Products for propane.
Thank you. Do you have a second to this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay. Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So historically, and a lot of the propane purchases were kind of done on a departmental level, which, you know, didn't really seem to make a whole lot of sense for pricing purposes. So I had asked Kristoaki, Director of Public Works, to, you know, look at getting pricing on an enterprise basis for all town locations. Secure more favorable pricing, which will result in savings. And we will be able to utilize the services of a Monroe business pursuant to our purchasing policy. I noted in the memo as well that we did at the same time provide, get quotes for the Board of Education and have, they've been involved in this process and have sent that information on to them as well. I believe they have some potential savings to be seen as well as a result of this. The town attorney has provided his attached opinion letter as well. And Mr. Noaki is on the call. If you have any questions that I can't address.
Thank you. So do we have any questions from the council for Mr. Noaki?
Madam Chair?
Madam.
All, first DeeDee, and then I think the other one is Jason Mauer, if I heard correctly. So DeeDee Martin, Martin, you first?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask Mr. Noaki. Yes, that too. I was going to say Mr. Kellogg. Did this, did this go out to bid at all? Or I appreciate that it's a local business, but did we bid this out at all?
This was engaged, this Kristoaki, Director of Public Works. This was engaged based on the price point pursuant to the purchasing policy that we requested proposals from the existing vendor and the vendor with, available within town, Sippin Energy. It didn't have to go out to formal bid.
Okay, did we get any other proposals?
Just those two. I'm sorry, somebody saying something else?
Nope, that was me.
We just pulled in the, the two, sorry, we pulled in the two bids, one from existing vendor, which is Rural Fuels, and the other one from Sippin Fuel.
And was Sippin Fuel, Rural is also a local company. Was Sippin the lowest bid?
Rural is actually located within the town of Trumbull. Sippin located within Monroe, came in at a price point of $1.399.
As opposed to the other bid?
Correct.
Okay. So it was a cheaper bid, is that what you're telling me?
The price point from Sippin, excuse me, from Row was 1.35. So I'm sorry? Show me that.
My recollection was almost identical, but with the hourly rates.
Who's more advantageous, correct?
So pursuant to our purchasing policy, there, it doesn't require bids for consumable energy products. So it does require us to get contemporary quotes from area sources. So that's, that's how Mr. Noaki pursued it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Noaki and Mrs. Kellogg? Anything from the other council members? All right, so up for a roll call vote, DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed.
And myself, Ena Lappelis, aye. So this motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Item S, acceptance of the following donations that individually exceed $1,500. Mr. O'Rourke, could you please introduce the motion?
I move that the following donations be hereby accepted by the town. $1,500 from the Mellon Foundation for Emergency Medical Services, $5,000 from an anonymous donor for the food pantry.
Can I have a second for this motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Nothing other than our thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions or comments? Hearing them, going on to, any, going on to a roll call vote for this resolution. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And myself, Ena Lappelis. The motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Lastly, we have second public participation. At this time, Mr. Kellogg, to assist me in facilitating the next item on the agenda, public participation. Mr. Kellogg?
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to. Anyone for the public who wishes to speak during second public participation, please remember to unmute your mic, and please indicate your desire to speak at this time. Madam Chair, I see no one looking, wishing to speak at this time.
Thank you. There being no further business, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned at this time. The time is 8:47 p.m. Good evening, and hopefully we'll be seeing each other the next time. Thank you.
Good evening, all.
Okay, good night.